Good evening and welcome to the Marquette City Commission Special Meeting, Monday, January 24, 2011. Could you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. City Clerk, could you please call roll?
Yes, Your Honor, Commissioner DePietro.
Yeah.
Commissioner Neme.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner St. Ange. Commissioner Snyder. Commissioner Stonehouse.
Here.
And Mayor Keevila.
We've got, next up, note of agenda changes. Being a special meeting, we can't add anything to the agenda tonight, Commissioners, as you're aware, so are there any deletions, I guess, to the agenda? Seeing none, I'd ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
I move the agenda be approved.
Motion by Commissioner Ryan.
Second.
Commissioner Stonehouse, second. All in favor, say yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries. I don't have any announcements tonight. We have two absent Commissioners, and I know Commissioner Snyder is out of the country, and I'm not sure if Commissioner St. Ange is on his way or is ill, but do we have a motion to excuse said Commissioners? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I motion to excuse Commissioner Snyder, as he is out of the country.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Ryan, seconds. All in favor, say yes.
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 Okay, and we'll hope Commissioner St. Ange shows up. Under new business, we need to approve the minutes of the January 10, 2011 commission meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review them? If so, are there any changes or a motion to approve? Commissioner Neme?
I'll move that we approve the minutes of the January 10, 2011 commission meeting.
Commissioner DePietro supports. All in favor, say yes.
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 Yes. Foesed? Motion carries. Okay, we're up to our first discussion item for the night, Michigan medical marijuana. And several people have asked me in the past few weeks why we're holding this discussion, if there was anything that, you know, is coming up, or why this date, and why not sooner or why not later. And this really stemmed from a conference that we attended last fall down in Dearborn, the Michigan Municipal League Annual Conference, and there were a couple of breakout sessions that addressed this issue in the community. And there were several Commissioners that are here that attended and thought, we should probably get a handle on what's going on in the community. As most people know, this was passed by a referendum in the state, I believe going on two years now. And it's something that the voters said that they wanted. And so, you know, running a municipality, we need to look at that and say, you know, how does that fit into our community? Does it? Does it not? And what precautions should we take as a community, whether it's safety or security, things of that nature? We really don't have an ordinance in place that addresses it at all. So this is totally new, and we thought that we would bring it up and discuss it, and I don't know if we're here to make any decisions tonight, but I think it's more of an informational-type meeting. We are going to address that subject first, and the next subject is the decriminalization discussion that we're going to hold. Most people are aware that Ann Arbor is a city that decriminalized use of marijuana. And I think there's some positives, I think there's also some negatives, from my opinion. Do I expect this to go anywhere tonight? Probably not, but I think it's time that we at least have the discussion and start. So that's going to be up next. I'm going to turn this over in a minute to the City Manager to get us started. We've got a couple of guests that we have called to come and address us on some issues. Anybody else that would like to address the commission? There's a spot under public comment that will be held after these two agenda items are up. So with that, City Manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. First, let me, on behalf of staff, thank the Commission for their leadership in bringing this up, as well as all the people we have participating here. We've received a lot of feedback from the community on this issue. And just to set expectations this evening and give people a chance to understand a little bit how this process will benefit the community, we're hopeful that tonight really is an information-sharing session, that there's a lot of candid dialogue, that nobody leaves this room this evening feeling like they haven't had a chance to let their views be heard. We don't certainly expect to ask the Commission for any kind of vote this evening. We are here to gather information. Also, we aren't here to refute any of the facts that stand before us this evening. The city staff, as the people who by charter are required to enforce the laws of the land, including the federal laws, the state laws, and the city ordinances, are in an odd place because of the tension that's created between the views of the federal laws and the views of state laws. And as I said, we're not here this evening to debate either of those. The people have passed, their will has been heard. But one of the things that we have to do is specifically address that tension in the way we, as a community, want to proceed forward. And that bears on a lot of different issues, whether it's the immediate judgment of our law enforcement officials, or the views of the community as they might be expressed through other kind of activity. We know that from other circumstances, and from looking at some of the other communities around Michigan, and some of the testimony you'll hear this evening and presentations from our experts, that if we choose at this point to fall in with either side of the issue, whether we fall in with a federal view of medical marijuana, or the state view of medical marijuana, that across Michigan, for those communities who've chosen to do so, it is a very litigious path that comes with fairly significant cost, both in terms of the impact to the community, as well as the cost of actually engaging in that litigation through the courts. And we also know from other issues that if we choose to put a moratorium in place, that oftentimes, we found that our codes and ordinances, particularly for those areas that are new, new areas of law within the state, fail to address what the community will might be. So we're caught really in kind of a tough spot between a rock and a hard place. If we do, we face litigation and potentially disparate treatment for part of the community. If we don't do anything, we know that the issue will control us and will be constantly reacting to every different request that might come up associated with medical marijuana, as opposed to having some control in place where we, as a community, can say what our goals are, what our beliefs are, and that allows us to manage the way that this issue is implemented within our community. And so, staff's hope is that through this informed discussion this evening, through all, hopefully, of the feedback that we'll get, not just from the experts we've asked to come in and speak, but from all of the citizens present, and maybe even those who've chosen to communicate with us through other means, that we'll have the basis to make some judgments about how we want to implement medical marijuana within the community of Marquette. The one thing I'll only add, though, is if you walk away this evening feeling like you haven't been heard, it'll be your own fault. And absolutely, I can tell you that it's our greatest hope that you choose to speak, because the most important thing that we have, in terms of our ability to decide what we might bring back as a recommendation later to the elected leaders, is a candid communication. Without that, we know the issue will control us. So this evening, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Ron Keefe, our City Attorney, to lead the discussion and start us down that path.
All right. Also, could we have the record reflect that Commissioner St. Ange is here in attendance? Thank you. City Attorney?
Thank you. I agree with what the City Manager just said, and also what you said, Mr. Mayor. It's probably time we looked at this issue. It was a ballot initiative back in 2008 that approved the medical marijuana law in Michigan, and I think the regulations by the Community Mental Health Department were in April of 2009, so we're coming upon almost two years since these regulations were adopted and put in effect. And so, and I can also say that the law itself seems to be in a state of flux, even though the statute says what it says and hasn't changed. There are cases coming down, not infrequently, all the time, trying to interpret what it means, and in some cases, you know, what you can provide and what you can't provide in your city ordinances or other ways of regulating it, if that's your choice. One of the things I thought we ought to do tonight to start this is, you know, educate all of us as to what this law is. I mean, what does it provide? So that we understand, you know, what it is and what it isn't, and then we can go forward and decide what we want to do with it. And by the way, the City Manager asked myself and the Chief Police, Mike Angeli, to take a look at this, and so I'm working with Mike on this, and a lot of the material that I've got, I got through Mike, and we've been talking for some time now in trying to coordinate our efforts in making this presentation tonight. But we invited two special guests that we want to, we think will be able to give their knowledge and experience of this law that will help you and those in the audience understand it. The first special guest is Matt Weasey, who's the Chief Assistant Prosecuting Attorney for Marquette County. And Sarah Derwin is the other guest. She's a health educator for the Marquette County Health Department. And I thought we might, with your indulgence, start with Matt and let him lead us through the essential elements of this act. And I think that's a good place to start, so we all know what we're talking about when we get down to what kind of recommendations we might be making at some point in this process.
Sure, sounds good. Matt, if you want, you can stand at the lectern and address us.
Good evening. My name is Matt Weasey. I'm the Chief Assistant Prosecuting Attorney in Marquette County. And I think part of the reason that I was asked to speak here tonight is because I've been doing trainings for law enforcement all over the Upper Peninsula for the last two years on the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act. And the purpose of that is to make sure that law enforcement understands what the law allows, and to make sure that we understand that this law was passed by, I believe, approximately a 60 to 40 percent vote in 2008, and that we need to be in compliance with the law. So what we did is we broke down what the law's about, what it says you can do, what you can't do. I've provided some materials to Chief Angeli that he may hand out to you for reference. One is a memo that I sent to law enforcement, giving them some guidance. Another is frequently asked questions about the law. The other item that I sent along for you to review is just simply the materials that one would go about filling out to apply for a medical marijuana card as a medical marijuana user, or as a medical marijuana caregiver. So I'll just start out, if I'm going too long, Mr. Mayor, please cut me off and tell me to sit down. I'll try to keep this brief. But basically, when the act was passed, it allows for an individual to get a medical marijuana card if they're suffering from a specified type of ailment, and the application lists what types of ailments are specified. It also lists chronic pain. So there's a number of items such as cancer, glaucoma, HIV/AIDS, hepatitis C, and there's a list of specified ailments that a person could have that may cause them either chronic pain, or that there may be a belief that there's a medicinal benefit from using marijuana. And so if the person has one of those ailments, they simply can get from the Michigan Department of Community Health right off their website an application form to fill out. The application form requires that they fill out the application, and they see a doctor. It has to be a medical doctor or a doctor of osteopathic medicine. It cannot be a chiropractor or podiatrist. It has to be an M.D. or a D.O., who has to certify that this patient is in fact suffering from one of these ailments, or from something else that causes that person chronic pain. And so they fill out their application, they fill out their, the doctor fills out the physician's certificate or certification, and the person sends this into the Michigan Department of Community Health with a fee of $100, which is good for a year. If the person is on SSI or Medicaid, they can get a reduced rate of $25, and that's all in the application materials. I want to stress that the Michigan Department of Community Health does not exercise a discretion as to whether or not this medical marijuana card is issued or not issued. It's simply a, a person goes to see their doctor, their doctor either says that they would benefit from medicinal marijuana or not. If they do, you send it in with your fee, and the state is required to issue the card. It's really almost a ministerial function that the Department of Community Health views on this. So it's between the patient, the doctor, and then once they're approved, the state is supposed to issue the card within 15 days. And there has been a backlog which has caused some issues for law enforcement, and the department, from what I understand, tells individuals that if they send in their application, and it's been more than 15 days, that they should carry their paperwork with them, if they should have contact with law enforcement and use that as a potential for a claim of right to have medical marijuana. What it means, once you get the card, is that you are allowed to have 2.5 usable ounces of marijuana in your possession at any one time. There are certain restrictions. You cannot be in possession of it, or you cannot use it on public transportation, in schools, public areas, things of that nature. And of course, you can imagine that law enforcement questions that have come up from that. If you're somebody in a car who's a passenger smoking, and they're not driving, is that public or not? And all those types of issues are getting sorted out through the courts as this law becomes more familiar in our community. But an individual's entitled 2.5 usable ounces of marijuana. The act does not define what is usable. I know that many people would consider stems and seeds not part of the usable weight. You know, we've told law enforcement, if they're close, we don't have to parse out the seeds and stems, but if they're close, within the two and a half ounces, and they have a card, then we should honor that. The act gets a little more vague when you look at the person who wants to grow their own marijuana, which the law allows them to do. So if you have a medical marijuana card, you can either grow 12 plants for yourself, or have 2.5 usable ounces in your possession at any time. And of course, you can imagine, if you're a good gardener, you could grow a lot more than two and a half ounces of marijuana. So then that becomes the issue of what happens when you harvest this marijuana and you have more than two and a half ounces, and the law totally does not address that at all. It also allows for individuals, if they do not want to acquire marijuana off the street, or through what we would typically consider from an illegal type of a drug transaction, a person could grow their own marijuana, or they could enlist the help of another person to be a caregiver or a provider for them. Anybody who is 21 years of age or older, and as long as they do not have a major controlled substance conviction, a felony-level drug conviction, can be a provider. A provider can grow up to 12 plants for anybody that lists them as a provider, and for anybody that they agree to be the provider for. So in other words, I'm over 21 years of age, I don't have a felony drug record, I could be a medical marijuana provider for up to five people under the law. So that means I could grow 60 plants for five, 60 plants in total, 12 each for five different people legally. If I choose to do that, the law says I have to have it in an enclosed, secured facility. It doesn't really define what that means, other than it says enclosed and secure. So, you know, we've run across some questions with that, if it's a chain-link fence and it's locked. And we typically said that we would like people to have it locked so that it couldn't be accessible by anyone else. And I use the analogy of a pool fence around a pool for safety, so if somebody couldn't wander into the pool, you have a lock gate on it. So that's a question that's come up. So a person who's 21 can grow up to 12 plants per person who identifies them as a caregiver, and they have to agree to be the caregiver for that person. So in theory, I could grow up to 60 plants for five people if they agree to sign me up, and if I agreed to be their provider. The law doesn't really address if my wife wants to get involved with it, but I would imagine she could do the same. So you could, I could envision a situation where two people who live together could both be caregivers and grow up to five, 12 plants for five people each. So you can see how the math can get kind of, is this really, you know, what it is? We've directed law enforcement to be, to use discretion, to honor the spirit of the law, and so far, we haven't had too many problems with it. I want to point out also that medical marijuana is not a prescription. People often use that misnomer, and they say a medical marijuana prescription. You don't get a prescription. The FDA has marijuana as a Schedule I drug, and because of that, you cannot prescribe it. So the federal government has said that marijuana does not have a legitimate use, yet the state of Michigan has passed a law that said it does. And it's my understanding that the Department of Justice has indicated that they will not prosecute anybody who is practicing under the medical marijuana law in a state that allows it, as long as they're legal in their state, they will not prosecute them under federal law violation. There's a lot of other questions to it, but, you know, if you don't have a person providing, and if you're not growing your own plants, where do you get your marijuana? You can't get it at the Shopko Pharmacy or the Walgreens Pharmacy. Under the law, you could buy it from anybody who wants to sell it to you. Now, that person, if they're not signed up to be your provider, could get prosecuted criminally, but if you have a medical marijuana card and you know somebody who sells marijuana, you can legally buy it from that person. Now, that doesn't mean that person can legally sell it to you. They could be at risk of a criminal law violation if they're not your provider, but the law doesn't really address how you're supposed to get it. So it's, I think the intent of the law was probably a good idea. The people of the state of Michigan have ruled that they, they wanted this to be the law. I'm not here to offer my personal opinion of whether I think it's a good thing or a bad thing. It's not my job to make policy, but I want to make sure that law enforcement's aware of the ramifications of the law, how it works, current case law as it comes about, and just offer you any information that you may want on it. One last, one last point I do want to make, the courts have consistently held in the state of Michigan that, just like if I'm driving a car today with an expired license, that's a crime. And if I go and get my license renewed tomorrow after I get stopped by a police officer today, that doesn't make that crime go away. Likewise, if I get caught with marijuana today, or a person gets caught with marijuana today, going and applying for a medical marijuana card tomorrow does not take away what happened prior to having the card. And the courts have consistently held that there's no retroactive effect to the law. You have to be currently legal to possess marijuana at the time and have the card to do that and be within compliance with the law.
Matt?
Any questions?
Yeah, could I just follow up on a couple things with Matt? When we talk about the physician certification, and I want to just make that clear, that the physician isn't prescribing medical marijuana. He's, the physician is simply making a statement that this patient would benefit from that use. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And there's one other issue that seems, that the cases seem to be getting more involved in all the time, and that's the question of medical marijuana dispensaries, which I don't believe the act addresses, but I wonder if you might just address that for the Commission and the audience?
Sure. The physician certification simply states that the physicians examine the person, they have one of these ailments, or they have chronic pain. If they authorize it, then you pay your fee, you get the card, and they don't prescribe it. So it's up to the person to figure out how to get marijuana. And the law doesn't address either how they use it, whether it's smoked or eaten or whatever, it's, and I think that it allows an individual to make that personal choice. Now, with regard to dispensaries, the law does not discuss or address cooperatives or dispensaries. There is no, it would be my understanding that if, if you wanted to be a provider, you would, and have a, say, a storefront operation, you could only provide to up to five people that have signed you up as their medical marijuana caregiver or provider. So I can't really envision a storefront operation unless everybody involved only provides medical marijuana to people that they've signed up and that have signed them up to be their provider. So as long as they're signed up to have this relationship of a provider and a consumer, then they would be legal. But as far as dispensaries, it does not address that at all.
Thank you.
Mr. Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to ask you two questions that are going to be, two questions that are going to be asked a lot. And one is, I live within 1,000 feet of a school, also known as a drug-free zone. Can I grow and/or possess my medical marijuana there? And my second question, which is also going to be very important for us, is what should I tell my employer if I'm subject to a drug test?
Those are both very good questions. The law says, the Medical Marijuana Act says, that you are exempt from criminal prosecution as long as you are in compliance with the act. So the way I read that, if I lived within 1,000 feet of a school, I could possess, if a person who lives within 1,000 feet of a school who had a medical marijuana card and was authorized either to grow their own plants, or to possess marijuana up to 2.5 usable ounces, they could do that, even if they were within 1,000 feet of a school. I think the act is pretty clear that if you fall under the act as a user or provider, then you are exempt from any criminal prosecution. So that drug-free zone, I believe, would not apply to the person who's operating under the medical marijuana program, under the Medical Marijuana Act of Michigan. So growing and possessing, I think, would be allowable under that scenario.
And then the second question was about notifying your employer.
Oh, good. I didn't write that down, I'm sorry. It's up to the employers to set policy, as far as human resources or personnel policies. Many employers have a drug-free workplace, drug and alcohol-free workplace, now drug, alcohol, tobacco, and I know tobacco is also a drug, or nicotine can be considered a drug. And just like my employer can say, I can't smoke on the premises, I can't drink on the premises, they can also say, I can't be under the influence while I'm at work. So if you are a medical marijuana user, the problem is, is that the residue of it stays in your bloodstream long after the, after you've used the marijuana. So you may test positive for THC in your bloodstream, but you may not be under the influence at the time. So that's really up to the personal employer to decide how they're going to handle that situation. I think, just, you know, if they have a drug-free work policy in place, if a person is taking prescription medication that makes them, I'll say, loopy, for lack of a better term, I think the employer could say, you can't be at work, I'm not going to let you drive the bulldozer today because you, you know, you're taking Vicodin and you seem high. And they could also take action against them for doing that if they were taking a legal, FDA-regulated drug.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Ryan?
And I know you've really emphasized this, but just to make sure, the caregiver, they must grow the plants, too?
No.
Can they somehow import it, or do they have to?
A caregiver is allowed to obtain up to 2.5 usable ounces of marijuana for a person who signed them up as a caregiver. Because you can think of the scenario where you have somebody who has mobility issues, or they're not ambulatory, they can't get up and get around, so they could enlist the help of somebody else to be their caregiver. And that somebody else, the caregiver, could go and buy the marijuana for them and then bring it to them. And so the caregiver could legally, if they had five people signed up, legally have whatever 2.5 times 5 is, I think that's 12 and a half ounces, of marijuana in their possession and not be in violation of the law.
But how do they get it?
The law doesn't address that. They either grow it, they buy it from somebody who is in illegal drug trade. They either grow it, they buy it from somebody who is in illegal drug trade, you know, they, they import it, I mean, I don't know. The law doesn't address it.
There's no way to legally sell it, other than as a caregiver?
Right. If I'm the, if the person's the caregiver, they could go buy it from a drug dealer theoretically, who's illegal, but then legally possess it and legally sell it to somebody that they're, signed up as their caregiver. Or they could grow it and legally sell it. The caregivers are entitled to sell it, and just like any other, you know, market, you know, demand and, and, you know, the market, you know, whatever the market will bear for a price, they can sell it.
Is there some kind of formal contract between the caregiver and whoever?
Just simply the paperwork that's submitted to the state. So a caregiver would have to fill out a form and send it into the state that says, "I agree to be this person's caregiver." That person has to also send in the same form with their application, say that that person's going to be my caregiver. And that's the only, only relationship that exists.
And the only other question is, what kind of legal issues have we seen in the U.P.?
Well, some people have decided they could grow marijuana and then sell it to anybody with a medical marijuana card without having been signed up as their caregiver, and that has been a problem, not in Marquette, but other jurisdictions in the U.P. We've had individuals who were believed to be using the act to get, as a camouflage, to get around, getting into trouble with selling marijuana. They might have people signed up, but they're suspected and been caught selling it illegally. There's no regulation on it, there's no inspections, there's, you know, it's, I've not heard of any complaints of people getting sick or getting bad marijuana, but, you know, that's always a risk that you run when you do a private transaction. We've had some issues with law enforcement making sure, when they approach somebody, that they are legitimate or not, and so that's, we've told them to be cautious on that and to be, you know, to not act in a zealous fashion. So it's, it's been pretty gray and murky with every case that comes along.
Just, just one more. Are most of these provisions in the act that we voted on, or were they determined by someone else after the fact?
Well, I would defer to your city attorney on that. The referendum simply, I believe, had a, you know how most referendums do, they have a descriptive paragraph that says, "Are you in favor of this or not?" And sixty percent of the population said yes. And then I think it was up to the legislature or somebody in Lansing to actually draft the law. And there may have been a model provided by the advocates for the law, but I'm not exactly sure who wrote it, and maybe Mr. Keefe knows that.
I think many people, you know, who may have supported this felt there would be some kind of a drugstore, for lack of a better term, you know, that people would go and get it, not, not have to go through this kind of unusual, strange process.
I'm sure they did, yes.
Commissioner Sinan?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Weese, in a nutshell, as, as a policy board, do we have the latitude to establish requirements or limitations within our jurisdiction that are more restrictive than the states?
That's an excellent, excellent question. I think that as a policy board, you have the right to regulate the health, welfare, and safety of your citizens, and if it meets a legitimate governmental need to regulate, then I think you have the authority to do that. So time, place, type of restrictions, if, if it's tied to a legitimate public safety interest or public welfare, then I think you would, but that's ultimately a question, I believe, for your city attorney. And of course, any act or any ordinance that's passed, just like any law, can always be challenged, so that's ultimately going to be up to the courts to decide that.
Mr. City Attorney, could you comment on that?
Well, that's what we'll be talking about, but some communities have looked at ordinances that somehow restrict these facilities, and this is where we get into this discussion of what's a facility or dispensary, as to where they can be located and how they would operate. It's almost a zoning issue than it is, you know, because the act is, is what it is, and that's not going to change, and we can't, you know, we can't say we're not going to comply with this section of the act, but we'll comply with that section, but there are some things that we may be able to do, and some other communities have done, in terms of some zoning regulations, as Matt said, to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community.
Any other questions for Mr. Weese while he's up here? I don't see any, Matt. We may call you back up, and I appreciate you coming and speaking to us. Thank you.
The other guests we asked to come tonight is Sarah Derwin, who's the health educator for the Department of Community, excuse me, the Market County Health Department, excuse me. Sarah, could you take the podium as well? And I really think we wanted to get your perspective from the health department point of view.
Thank you very much. I am a health educator at the Market County Health Department, and I am in substance abuse and tobacco prevention, so always busy there. And basically, as an invited guest, what we wanted to kind of get across is always looking, we do have kind of the benefit right now to look at what other municipalities, what other states have done, how they've done it. So really, to, what I would strongly suggest would be to go to those counties, those communities, ask them, you know, "What'd you do? How'd you do it? How's it going?" That sort of thing. I know I've been talking with an attorney in Traverse City, and they're going through, similar to what we're going through the city there, and he's been a lot of help as far as, you know, just talking about some of the challenges, some of the issues that will come up. So that would be my biggest suggestion. Working in substance abuse prevention, I work with a lot of youth in our county, a lot of kids, and, you know, some of our concerns coming up from a public health standpoint would be some of the secondary effects of dispensaries in our community. You know, it, we get kind of mixed messages with youth. Lately, I've been going in and kind of younger and younger, and we'll talk about marijuana, and they'll say, "Oh, it's a medicine now, though, so it's in a different category." So it presents a bit of a challenge, being a health educator, dealing with youth and trying to say, "Well, you know, for some folks, you know, there might be relief for it, but, you know, for young children, you know, not so much, and it can be dangerous." "No, no, no, it can't be dangerous. I saw on TV that it's a medicine." And, you know, so that's something that we, you know, we always look at is the youth and, and kind of what messages we're bringing to them about substances in our community, and, so that's one thing. And definitely, from a lot of the research I've done, looking at zoning ordinances can be very helpful as far as distances from schools for dispensaries, from churches, that kind of thing, what to put in place. And some of the communities that I've looked at, that have had a little more success with dispensaries, have been having a very stringent zoning ordinance for them, having inspections on plumbing, electrical in some of the buildings, that sort of thing. So that would just be kind of from a public health standpoint, some of my recommendations.
All right, thank you. Do you have any questions? Seeing none, we may call you back up. Thank you.
Thank you.
City Attorney?
I was just going to say, Your Honor, that we've heard from the prosecutor a little, more about how this act works and what it means, and from Sarah, from the public health standpoint, we really, I think, need to talk to law enforcement as well, as to what challenges they may face, and I think the chief is prepared to talk a little bit about that tonight, so I'd like to, you know, ask him to comment.
Okay.
Thank you. I did want to ask Sarah a question. I, kind of slipped by me here when you were walking down, but I had read somewhere that the Department of Community Health has deemed dispensaries as illegal. Is that true, or anything that you've heard, or anything like that?
I've heard stories, and I know about.
All right.
About first you ask, there's kind of a difference.
Okay, thank you. Just from the perspective of law enforcement, you know, I'll, I'll begin from the premise that, you know, most people, probably most people in this room are going to think I'm somewhat biased, but I want to make it clear that my opinion is purely professional. I have no bias whatsoever against the users of marijuana. I have no opinion whatsoever on whether its medicinal purposes are valid or not. I'm not a physician, I'm not a, an expert in that regard. I do have general concerns about where this meeting or where this discussion might go in the form of dispensaries, although I'm not going to give a, you know, a blanket, everything's okey-dokey with, with the medical marijuana law, because I don't think it is. It's a very difficult procedure for law enforcement. But I think dispensaries bring a whole nother problem to what we're talking about. Currently, law enforcement is dealing with the situation on a, on a case-to-case basis. We have trained, as Matt Weese indicated, in enforcement of the medical marijuana law, and keeping in mind that it's new to all of us, I'm not going to say we haven't made mistakes, but, you know, we're getting used to it and getting more educated in that, you know, as the contact arises between law enforcement and the people involved in the medical marijuana issue, you know, we become more acclimated to a procedure that allows us to, to, you know, discover the facts of that possession before we take any, any criminal action or any legal action. You know, we, generally what we do is we either respond or become involved in a marijuana situation, we will deem the circumstances, if it's someone who meets the criteria for the Medical Marijuana Act, either as a provider or as a patient, we will act accordingly. We do not kick down doors, we do not throw people around, we simply investigate. My concerns broaden, though, with, when we talk about providers in the form of a dispensary. And my definition of a dispensary is a, a group of people together in one location, growing, harvesting, and providing marijuana to a set group of patients. That in itself is not a bad thing necessarily. I'm not, you know, I'm not saying that's the concern. I mean, I'm not necessarily concerned about that in its simplest description, but I am concerned about what comes along with it. I have a responsibility to this community to, you know, to provide a certain level of safety, which, you know, I need to take seriously, and often with a large number of marijuana providers, because this law is directed towards a less, what's the word I'm looking for, less regulated form of enterprise, tends to bring people into the business that are not always just doing what they say they're doing. And I can speak from, not from my history or from my experience, but from the experience of, of other states that have been dealing with this, specifically California, for a number of years. Those states have reported crimes increasing in the area of dispensaries, crimes in the, in the form of people being robbed, going to dispensaries, dispensaries being robbed, people being robbed coming from dispensaries. Also, the proximity of some of these dispensaries to schools, to children, to what happens to the marijuana when, when these people leave the dispensary, and, you know, what they do with the marijuana. People will argue with me, and I will not argue back, but there is a, you know, criminal, criminal aspect to this, this procedure. I know a lot of people will look at themselves and say, you know, "I'm not a problem, I would never do something like that, I would never sell marijuana to a child, I would never do anything illegally if I'm involved in this," and that could very well be true, but there are people that do. And the enterprise of a dispensary attracts those people, plain and simple. An dispensary could be set up for all the right reasons, all the practical purposes, but the truth is, is that when it comes to law enforcement, we end up dealing with, with everything else that comes, comes along with it, and the stuff, the other stuff does come with it. You cannot deny that fact. I guess I'll just leave it at that for now. I, I will say that, you know, whatever this commission decides, in the long run, either today or in the future, I mean, Marquette Police Department, we will, you know, enforce, you know, what we're supposed to. I guess I would touch on just a couple more points. I don't know if it's the right time now or not, but Ann Arbor was mentioned at the beginning of this discussion, and I've done a little research into that law as well. An interesting point is that the city of Ann Arbor decriminalized marijuana and opened up dispensaries. And I'm not going to get into the decriminalization part of it right now, but the, the general tone of law enforcement in Michigan has been to enact the laws that are in place, either at a state level or at a federal level. And I just want to caution the commission to gather an understanding of that before you proceed any further along those lines. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. City Attorney?
I don't think I have a whole lot, Your Honor, to say more. I think what the chief is trying, is saying in part is, we're almost living in a parallel universe. We have this Schedule I controlled substance, which is a crime to possess and use, in the federal system and the state system, but we've carved out this, this little part of this, the medical marijuana part of it, and it's difficult sometimes for law enforcement, particularly since identification of qualified patients and caregivers is not available to law enforcement until such time as, you know, there's an investigation or perhaps a possible arrest before they can make that determination. So it is a real challenge for law enforcement. And that's all I have, thanks.
Okay. Commissioner Sinan?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Keefe, just a quick question. Neighbors to the south, state neighbors to the south and west of us, Wisconsin, excuse me, Wisconsin and Minnesota, what, do you know offhand what the status of their state laws are with regard to this type of law?
You know, I don't know that offhand. I know there are a number of states that have similar acts, and I have those in my material, I can find them maybe during the course of this discussion. I'll look for that.
And one more other quick question, I guess, with regard to interstate transfer of marijuana, if it's, if someone in Michigan is a licensed caregiver, and I don't know if licensed is the right word, but if they're a caregiver, are they permitted to transfer 2.5 ounces per patient across state lines? Can anybody comment on that?
It's not addressed in the statute, but I would be very surprised that you could do that. I mean, yeah, Matt? Yeah, sure.
If you are in, if I'm from another state in Michigan, you are given, what makes it under the past state's law, so if you're from California and you're Michigan, and you're compliant with the California marijuana law, you're okay, Michigan, under Michigan's law, but whether or not the other states, the rest of the state, is, you know, it's up to each state. The law does not allow you to travel across states with marijuana dispensary, if those states don't have marijuana law, or cross州 [inaudible].
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
I do have an answer for you, Commissioner. This, I think the commission may have a copy of the white paper that was done by Gerald Fisher in 2010, and there are fourteen states, as well as the District of Columbia, that now permit the medical use of marijuana, and those states do not include Minnesota or Wisconsin in the sheet that I have.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Ryan? Just to follow up with, with the chief or city attorney, the idea of dispensaries, you know, it's my understanding you can't have a dispensary, but, or is there some way that, unless you call somebody selling or providing for five people a dispensary, but...
That is a very difficult, that's a very difficult question. I mean, that's the, I think there- I mean, that's the, I think there may be, and Matt can correct me, I thought there was at least one case that held that dispensaries were not legal in Michigan, but I'm not positive of that. But we see cases coming down either from the circuit courts around the state or the Court of Appeals all the time on that, a lot of them dealing with that issue of dispensaries, and it's not addressed in the act. And so, Matt, do you have anything that you could add?
The act requires that there be that relationship. Caregiver and the medical marijuana user. So with the, to the extent that you could open a dispensary, it would be, I think, my interpretation of the law, that that dispensary owner could only have up to five people that they could provide marijuana to. Or else they would have to have a collective of providers who are all part of a cooperative to provide marijuana. But I've also seen that they have not allowed a dispensary in at least one case.
Okay, when you say they've, when you say they have not, what, again, I'm trying to get clear, you know, on what is a dispensary? In the terms we're talking about it here, I know what the word means, but...
I think I could answer that. I think of what, in terms of what's being requested of this commission is a, what Matt described as a group of providers, providing up to, for up to five people, each person within that group. So I'm thinking, you know, five people in a group, providing for five people.
Okay.
That kind of a thing. You know, others will argue here, and I've heard them stand up, but, I mean, I've read the white papers, I've read everything, and everything I've read has either been the act has not addressed dispensary, dispensaries, and the Michigan Attorney General has even deemed them to be illegal, just from his point of view. Now, I also understand that those decisions are probably being challenged, and that's where the confusion comes to law enforcement.
And I only ask these questions to become clear, you know, I don't have any...
Unfortunately, it doesn't get much clearer.
No, and I know, but it sounds like, based on what we've heard, the only way you could have a dispensary which is dispensing to more than five people is to have some kind of coalition of caregivers operating from some location together where they would be caring for their patients.
Right.
You know, one of the issues that was brought up at the conference that we were at, a couple of issues, I guess, one was dealing with dispensaries and how the cities enact zoning laws to limit or control where a dispensary is located, you know, even as far as hours of operation, days that they can be open. There are also other communities that simply said, you know, "Our zoning law is going to be, essentially must comply with all federal laws." Well, federally, it's against the law. Boom. That's how they kept them away. And I'm only saying, you know, just bringing up some bits. I know all the commissioners were not present. But one of the issues with wanting to control them is, from a safety and a security perspective, there was a fire marshal that was there and said that it's, in their community is a big issue because people are growing a bunch of plants, and they have heat lights and extension cords plugged in all over, and irrigation systems, and it's just potentially a hazardous situation. And they were concerned about it from that perspective, and he came not opposed to it. You know, he actually just came to sit in on the session and wanted to bring that point up. He said, "I'm not opposed to it, but I'm saying, as communities, you really should look at that and be sure that these people are safe, that these places are safe, and that they're inspected, you know, by your fire department." So anyway, just some points we brought up, but possibly Dennis Stackwitz, our city planner. Dennis, have you looked at what other communities are doing or how they address this?
Thank you, Your Honor. Maybe I can elaborate a little bit on the education you just provided, but we have researched some ordinance examples, and you are correct. Livonia, Michigan, is the one that stands out because that's currently being contested now, but they are, in their zoning ordinance, they have provided a statement that says "uses for enterprises or purposes that are contrary to federal, state, or local laws or ordinance are prohibited." So therefore, whatever, you know, because it's illegal by federal law, they've deemed it an illegal use. There are other communities, the village of Lake Isabella, they have allowed dispensaries as a home occupation with standards, but their term dispensary generally means a primary caregiver. Now, one of the things you have to remember with zoning is you can kind of tread in some dangerous territory because the state zoning enabling statute provides for vesting of non-conforming uses. So if you put something in a zoning ordinance that's allowed as a certain use, and then perhaps the sentiment in the community changes over time, you still have a vested non-conforming use that, depending on how the law flashes out, you may have to allow that use to continue till, you know, it's abandoned for six months, or if something catastrophic happens to it. So if the community would desire change later on, you may end up in a situation where you have to allow that continued use. And one other example I wanted to bring to the table is that it's not always zoning that's used to regulate. One particular ordinance that we did research was the city of Niles, Michigan, and they created a standalone ordinance in their code. And really what it does is it's based upon the state act, and it really just further restates the act and regulates patients and primary caregivers, and it adds conditions for primary caregivers, such as the thousand-foot rule and things like that. So that really, you know, if they repealed that, that wouldn't provide for any non-conforming vesting. The real, I just had to make that important so everybody understands, not for or against it, but know that if you do go the zoning route, the state law, the Enabling Act for zoning, has a particular section in there that requires vesting of non-conforming uses, which you could get into a situation that if the community deemed it didn't want it later on, you could still end up with it. As far as what I'm seeing on different ordinances regarding dispensaries, it's really a terminology situation. Most communities, a dispensary is just replacing the two words of primary caregiver. So in that instance, a dispensary can be a home occupation where you have no more than five people coming to it at a time, and they can't grow more than, what would be, 70 plants. So, you know, in my review of the act itself, trying to bring the two together and taking the state act and bringing it down to a local level, I really can't find anything in the act that requires the establishment of dispensaries. It really only requires that you provide for primary caregivers at that level.
Commissioner Neme?
This is a question also for Mr. Stackwitz. In our current zoning ordinance, do we have such requirements on any other business on hours of operation or distance from schools, distance from parks, et cetera?
We do.
Okay, that is an accepted feature of the ordinance?
Those are generally done as conditional use permits that are reviewed by the Planning Commission. One that comes to mind would be a daycare. Obviously, you limit the hours of drop-off and pickup if they're located in a neighborhood and things like that.
And we have established requirements for home occupations currently?
Yes.
Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. This would be for Matt. Do you have that microphone over there? One or two questions, I got two questions for you. I know that this is going to come up pretty much in the near future, but let's say if I live in a nursing home or assistant living facility or retirement home, can I consume medical marijuana?
That would, yeah, that would be up to the facility to make that determination. I know, I believe Northern Michigan University has said that as part of their university or campus ordinances, that they are not going to recognize medical marijuana on campus. So that would be up to the individual facility to make that decision as to whether or not they would allow it.
And then I have one other one is if I, do I have to tell my landlord that I am a patient in the MMP?
And that's in the materials that you'll eventually get from me. There's a frequently asked questions, and that's one of the questions. There's no requirement that you have to tell your landlord. However, your landlord can put it in the lease, like no pets or no smoking. They could also indicate no growing or smoking marijuana inside the apartment or the residence that's being rented. I don't know if they could restrict the use if it were consumed by eating it. A patient or a user of medical marijuana may contest that, but the other types of restrictions, I believe they could put in their lease.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Staff, any more comments, questions on this issue? Again, this, as I mentioned when we got started, is purely informational and really a way for us to, I think, get started.
Could I just, one more, just, you know, looking at it here, because we're going to hear from people out here, and I guess, you know, the issues I'm going to be looking at, it seems pretty clear on who can get it and how. I mean, the act seems pretty clear about that. The big question seems to be how you get it. And I think as a city commission, and I'm not just speaking for myself, I'm sure there are others, you know, the kind of issues we're going to have to deal with are what kind of hazards are created with people creating that supply, and what kind of neighborhood issues does it create in terms of crime and what it does to neighborhoods if we're, if we have people dispensing it all over the place. I guess those are the issues I would be concerned about, so.
Okay, and that's a good point. When we get to, and we're going to cover one more subject matter here before public comment, but I think we all know that this law passed, and someone who has a card and can possess marijuana and use it and consume it, I don't think we really have anything to say about that. I don't think we're going to pass an ordinance that restricts that. I think the discussion ultimately comes down to providing it, and whether it's a dispensary or someone growing it as a business out of their house. I think that's really what we need to look at and concentrate on. So again, anyone who wants to comment when we get to that portion, if you could restrict those comments to that. We're really not here to say, "Boy, we think this person should have it," or "This disease is..." That's been decided. That's not us. We're kind of looking more at the dispensary angle and controlling that, keeping it safe and secure in the community. So with that, we will move into our next discussion, which again is the decriminalization, just a leadoff discussion. City manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to ask Mike Angelii to go ahead and lead that on behalf of staff.
Well, we know where this is headed. Thank you, Chief.
Yeah, thank you. I'm not exactly sure how to lead it off, but I'll just start. You know, for a long time, the question has come up from time to time about the decriminalization of marijuana, and by that I mean, the current penalty in Michigan under state laws, it's a 90-day misdemeanor. 93-day misdemeanor? One-year misdemeanor? Okay. Thanks, Matt. And the question comes up that, you know, should it be decriminalized? By decriminalizing, it doesn't mean making it illegal, it just means making it a lesser penalty, that being a civil infraction. There are some benefits to a civil infraction, you know, from a law enforcement point of view in that it's, you know, it's easier to take care of, it might be easier to handle on the street, it might shorten your length of time in dealing with somebody, but that's about it. I did some research, and again, I'm not professing to be the all-knowing on this, so don't assume I'm just making stuff up or just winging it, but I, you know, the only community I could find in Michigan was Ann Arbor, that at least, at least a university or college town that decriminalized marijuana was Ann Arbor. And, you know, that goes back many years. The basis for the laws is, change was, is very detailed, and I won't get into that, but the interesting point about the Ann Arbor law is that it's a civil infraction, except on the campus of the University of Michigan where it's still a misdemeanor. And that local and state law enforcement still enforces the law as a misdemeanor. It's one of the things that's not really understood about the decriminalization, is that law enforcement still has the option to prosecute under either statute. That said, you know, I've mentioned to you before, Mayor, that, you know, the, from my point of view, the, I'll admit that the people that smoke marijuana are not necessarily the worst people in the world, or not the biggest criminals in the world, and there's a lot of them that really don't give law enforcement a lot of problems. However, it's what comes with it and the type of message we want to put out in the community that concerns me. Any changes in this regard project a certain community image that, in my view, will attract problems that we currently don't have and I don't believe we need. I give a lot of credit to this community for, for lack of a better term, the lack of serious crime. And that combined with the current levels of law enforcement that we do have, we seem to get along very well and things seem to work out. But in my mind, decriminalization brings forth a whole new idea, a whole new attitude that will be projected beyond the city limits and probably the state of Michigan. I defer at this point to Ron, if you'd like to make some comments. I just wanted to start this off.
I think there's a legal aspect to this, notwithstanding Ann Arbor and medical marijuana. I mean, marijuana possession in Michigan is against the law. It's a state law. So how does a city enact something that's contrary to state law? I mean, for example, you have to be 21 in Michigan to drink alcohol. Are we going to pass a law that says you only have to be 18 to drink alcohol in the city of Marquette? I'm not sure we can do that any more than we can violate state law in any other areas. So it's an interesting legal question. I'm not saying we can't. I'm just saying, aside from what Mike said, the legal questions are, perhaps is interesting, as to whether we can enact something that is really contrary to state law.
Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. In November 2008, when this law was passed, it was stated in Lansing that this was well-written and easy to understand. Well, I don't know who in Lansing, I don't think anybody understood it because we spent two hours in a seminar in Dearborn in September going through this. And prosecuting attorney, the defense lawyers, the expertise presenting the Michigan marijuana law, and then everybody that was in the seminar was allowed to ask questions, and nobody was on the same page, the law enforcement, the people defending, the ones that had been arrested. I mean, it was just one big can of worms. Now, some municipalities are turning a blind eye to it and saying, this is in Michigan, that they are going to try and stop this, but they can't. This been an issue that was... This been an issue that was passed by the voters. But one of the things that I feel bad about is college students and some high school, high school students also that did get caught, could not go into law enforcement, medical fields, and many other type jobs that they were qualified to do. And it was probably just a one-time error on their part, but it eliminated them from going into the field that they had enjoyed, looking forward to working in. So I feel that's a very heavy penalty for a student or a young person, I should say, to have to pay that their career was no longer available for them because of that infraction that they had been arrested for. I don't know if you could ever get that deleted from their criminal records, but if you'd like to address that, that'd be fine.
I could comment and maybe Mike could comment on it and perhaps Matt because he's the chief assistant prosecuting attorney for this county. But typical first offenses of, an offense of this nature results in a delayed sentence in most places, which means there is no record. And I also know that, at least when I was a prosecutor, if you had a conviction of this sort and that was the only thing on your record, you could get it expunged after a number of years. I mean, I just don't find that as much of an argument, to be honest with you. And I'd let Matt weigh in on that.
I concur. Most first-time possession of marijuana users, the drug code has a provision in it that allows for a non-public, delayed or deferred sentence, so they don't get a record and it's not even a public record. And most individuals who are caught with marijuana get that so they don't get a permanent record. And as Mr. Kiefus said, if you have no other criminal conviction on your record after five years, you could petition to have that record expunged. And I can't speak for other jurisdictions, but I know that under, in Marquette County anyway, we would most likely not be opposed to a person who had that one thing on their record, getting their record cleaned up after five years.
Why I brought that up was one of the persons that I know was going into the Department of Corrections. And that was on his record since he was like 16-years-old. And they were trying to stop him from becoming a employee in the DOC. He did get it removed after many, many tries and having to hire a lawyer to get it removed. But that was in his record that he did not know that it remained in the record. So, and that was a one-time conviction. So that's why I'm saying, I'm sure there are young people out there that still got it on their records that they don't know that. And, and it, once it's on there, it's very hard to get that off of your record. So this is why I feel that this is pretty stiff penalty for young people to pay, like you say, for a one-time conviction. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much for your input.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
I'll just weigh in on this. You know, I think there are some things, some laws have to be applied across a state. We can't have, you know, one law in Marquette, one in Ishpeming, one in Champion, one in Esconaba. You know, I mean, there are reasons for this. I think this is an issue that's addressed at the state level. Just as we cannot turn around and change the medical marijuana law, no matter how we feel about it, you know, we can't change the state law on marijuana. So why are we even worrying about this? This is not something for us to decide. This is a state issue. I mean, it's a state law. It applies to everybody in the state. You know, for Marquette to pass a law that's different makes no sense. As, as somebody else pointed out, perhaps our attorney, you know, you can't have a drinking age law that's different in one city or another or anything else, so. It should be a state law.
See if anyone else wants to speak first. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I would certainly agree very strongly with what Commissioner Ryan said. I mean, this is really an issue to be fought at the state level in Lansing, not certainly an issue for local communities. You can almost draw an interesting comparison with the, the previous discussion we had on the Michigan marijuana law. I mean, here we have a series of national laws and regulations concerning the drug and then we have a state that says, no, we're not going to follow it. So they turn it upside down and we're sitting here trying to really figure out what the, what the answer is. I mean, this, this is just foolish, I think. So regardless, again, of where we may be on the individual aspects of the Michigan marijuana law, certainly decriminalization of the drug is a state issue to be dealt with and not a community one. Thank you.
Commissioner DePietro?
Did Ann Arbor pass a law where they decriminalized it?
Yes, they did.
So that's not a state law, but a community law?
Well, it's a city ordinance and they opted to reduce it to a civil infraction. But that didn't eliminate the state law. It didn't take place of the state law. It was just a, an effort on their part to give law enforcement another option. It's also my understanding that the reason they, a big reason that law went into effect was to reduce the workload on law enforcement at that level as just one of many factors.
That is, that's been an issue that's raised before. It's the expense of the war on drugs. It's also a revenue issue for some municipalities. But as Mike said, they pass an ordinance. The state law is still good. An officer could write under the state laws just as easily as he could, I suppose, under the city ordinance, depending on what the city wanted him to do. And then there are other police agencies in that area that could write under the state statute as well, so.
But we could do the same. The city of Marquette could also do the same as Ann Arbor did. I mean, if the commission.
I would think that you could pass an ordinance like Ann Arbor's if that was what the city wanted to do.
Well, that's what I was trying to say. I mean, I'm not trying to change the state's law on anything. I was just addressing our local ordinance, that's all. Thank you.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Anybody ever been to Hash Bash Weekend in Ann Arbor? That's exactly why Ann Arbor passed the law, basically, you know, for the city was pure publicity for their event. That was the purpose behind it. I mean, it served nothing else. It really wasn't a criminal action remover. It was simply a way to gain publicity for what was a very lucrative weekend for the city of Ann Arbor.
Well, you know, this issue came up at a conference as well. And I thought, you know, it wouldn't hurt to bring it up and discuss it at the same time we're discussing the first issue. And it was interesting that, if you think back, a month or two ago, in the headlines, it was an assistant prosecutor, sorry, Matt, I believe from Wisconsin, that was involved with a sexting case of the young lady that had gone to him for help. And coincidentally, it was a marijuana conviction that she was trying to have removed. That's why her contact with this gentleman had started. And she was trying to get into medical school. So that happened at the same time. This issue has come up before. I thought it would be a good time to discuss it as well. But, you know, personally, I agree with Commissioner Stonehouse and Ryan that I'm not a big fan of usurping state law. And I think that although there would maybe be some people that would benefit from it, you know, I'm certainly about second chances for people and giving everyone opportunities. I think, as the chief pointed out, there's certainly some, some negative aspects that I just don't think warrant us looking any further. That's my opinion. City manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. And I think as we're getting closer to public comment, just to kind of summarize where we're at and for the community then to appreciate the standpoint of our law enforcement officers and the rest of city staff. You're hearing the challenges of all of this ambiguity in the law. Thankfully, justice is blind. Mike Angelie doesn't have the wherewithal or the discretion to decide which laws he's going to choose to enforce and which ones he doesn't. And so consequently, it could be one of our fire inspectors. It could be a police officer. It could be a zoning official, an assessor, somebody walking into somebody's backyard, seeing some plants, walking into somebody's basement, seeing an unsafe situation, stopping somebody on the street, stopping them in their car anywhere. Because of the Michigan law, we have no idea if those people are operating legally, if they're documented or if they've taken steps to address some of the things that you've heard tonight about their sources or their methods. And so as a consequence, it can be a pretty challenging and anxiety-ridden effort, both for the people who might be confronted by city, city officials or by the people actually who are being confronted. And so what you'll, what you haven't heard, the good story that we've got to tell is we've noted and we've gotten a lot of compliments on how tolerant our community is, the basic kind of discretionary judgment that goes into any one of the law enforcement functions that our officials serve in. And so until this area gets resolved, ultimately either by the state or through other commission action that, that may come up, the path we're trying to, to define is one where we're able to maintain the lowest litigation risk. We don't see it necessarily as, as the role of our staff action to help the state litigate or try all of these different options through the courts to come up with what we might want to do as a city. Our hope would be that we'd be able to find the most pragmatic strategy going forward that ultimately lets the city control more how we choose to implement medical marijuana here in the, in the city of Marquette and give us at least enough guidance so that we can make sure that city officials are operating both in accordance with the law and the wishes of the community.
All right, thank you. Are there any other comments from commissioners regarding this issue before we open it up to the public? Okay, seeing none, we're to the public comment, period. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. We have a lot of people here wishing to speak, so I would ask that you keep your comments, you know, as brief as you can. Again, I want you to say everything you came to say. And we'll just start one at a time. We need to have you give your name and address for the record and you can just stand at the lectern and do that, so.
My name is Brian Block and I live in Marquette City. I have a lot of things to say. There was a lot of information that.
Point of order, Your Honor? Can we get an address, please?
908 North Third Street. There's a lot of information that I could address here today, but I am limited to five minutes and I don't want to be combative. I will, however, address Commissioner Stonehouse. One of my professors in law school was one of the attorneys who worked on the decriminalization matter in 1973 in Ann Arbor. And it was done as a response to the federal government's classifying marijuana on the same basis as heroin. And the Hash Bash developed in the city as a result of the action that was taken then, as opposed to vice versa. I would also like to say that as far as the question of federal law and the conflict between state and federal law, this commission was elected not by the citizens of the United States, but by the people of the city of Marquette. I don't know how much time you spend discussing about how to fix social security, issues of national defense, but the people of the city of Marquette have spoken 70% in favor of medical marijuana. And though the conflict exists with the state, we would hope that you focus on the desires of the people of the city of Marquette. The comments that I would like to make and was prepared to make are that this history of medical marijuana or the future of medical marijuana need not be a mystery. There are 15 years of other states' experiences with the issue. In the early 70s, certain Western European countries addressed the issue of decriminalization and they've got 30 years of history to draw from. In 2002, the citizens of the state of Colorado, by referendum, approved a law very similar to the one that now exists in Michigan. In 2007, the Colorado Supreme Court ruled that the restriction on the number of patients that a caregiver could have was an unconstitutional restriction. If you can have five, why can't you have 10? Nobody could stand up and say, here's a good reason for it, effectively opening the door to the commercialization of the distribution of medical marijuana. In 2009, the city of Breckenridge, Colorado, through its city commission, held a mostly meaningless vote where they legalized marijuana in the city of Breckenridge. Didn't change state law, didn't change federal law, but the city basically came out and said, this is what our residents want. And in the winter of 2009, 2010, during a down economy, the city of Breckenridge, Colorado, saw a 20% increase in their tourism and no notable increase in crime or any other negative social impact from the dispensary business. The medical marijuana law is here. You can't put it back in the box. Whether or not we benefit from this will depend on the actions taken by those persons in a position to either attempt to hinder for their own personal reasons or to encourage this new reality that we are all going to face. Thank you.
Thank you. Folks, if you could please hold your applause. Thank you. Sure. We can go, there's no order. Anyone who wants to go next certainly can.
Hello, I'd like to, my name's John Slaton. My address is 105 Seventh Street, Calumet. I happen to be in the neighborhood. I'd like to thank the city of Marquette for having this discussion. I think it's important. Couple of points that the assistant prosecutor brought up I'd like to maybe touch on. There's two documents out. I don't have them, but you can find them off of this. The House Fiscal Agency, prior to this law being enacted, did an analysis. One of the things that come out of that is that a patient has to take no formal action to be covered under the law. No formal agreement with a caregiver. There has to be a need. You're covered under the getting a card portion of the law if you have a debilitating condition. You're covered under the affirmative defense portions of the law if you have only a serious condition. The criteria is a lot lower. The difference is, is the card basically is your keep out of jail free card. If you have that card, you cannot be subject to arrest. Under the affirmative defense, you can. The Attorney General last year made a determination. They were looking, as a budget matter, to outsource a medical marijuana program. And they asked the Attorney General for an opinion as to whether that was legal. One of the key statements he made in there is that with any public initiative, you are to make a liberal interpretation that best suits the wants and the needs of the people. I would like to bring up that the city of Marquette has no obligation to enforce federal law. The VA accepts medical marijuana cards if you're legal. The VA will not cut off your medication as long as you're in a, you've gone through the requirements of the law. As far as zoning, don't change the law. Marquette has the ability as a city to budget the prosecution for marijuana down to the lowest priority. When the police department solves every crime on the books, then you can allow money to be spent for marijuana. You don't have to change the law. You can just deprioritize it. I don't think, you know, it's a violent bunch of people. As far as the military getting arrested and all of that, if you get arrested for it, change decriminalizing. When they do background checks, doesn't matter whether it's been expunged. Arrested is arrested. If it's a civil offense, you have, you can honestly say on a background on a security questionnaire, you haven't been arrested, you haven't lied. That won't deny you a security clearance. You know, you've got enough laws for zoning now for lights and. You know, you've got enough laws for zoning now, for lights and safety and plumbing and all of that. You don't need to, uh, try to regulate something. The law was set up the way it is to keep the regulation out of it. And, uh, you know, I think bad service. Uh, one big point that's not brought up, state of Michigan allows reciprocity for any tourist that comes into Marquette that has a pot card. They're totally covered under the law. They can go to a dispensary and be provided, and long as there's a medical need, they're covered under the affirmative defense portion of the law. They have the full respect of the law, and so I'd like you to think about that. Marquette's, uh, it's a beautiful town. I've liked it my whole life. Uh, I'm from downstate. I sound a little more southern, but that's due to my years in the military. Thanks for having this discussion, but please, you know, go light on regulating. I think you already have laws in place that'll do that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Hi, um, I'm Jennifer Vida, eight fifteen West Fair, Marquette. And, um, welcome. Nice to have you from Calumet. Thank you for your comments. Um, I, health tourism, health food, health medicine. I, I would like to go from the point that cooperative caregiving, dispensary, if the point is that it's already been voted a medicine, it's recognized as healthy for us, for patients who are registered, documented need. By making it more accessible as a medicine to those registered patients, we're removing a huge amount of money from a black market. We are disconnecting a medicine from true, really bad-for-us-in-society drugs, and, and those suppliers. By having cooperative caregiving, we can help each other with supplies and information. We can help new patients get started in their own garden, if they choose to start their own garden. The law is a new law. It's a baby law. It's not easy to write policy. You know, thank you to the state Michigan people who worked really, really hard on it. It's not easy to write policy. Um, and I'm sure it will be improved with time, and as, as more, um, knowledge and experience comes forward. And, and that was an excellent point from Brian, that the other states have had more experience in years developing their policies. And, um, teen use hasn't exploded in these states. Um, traffic violations, it's not a risky thing from that perspective, and this is documented research. And from a respect perspective, again, we're talking about registered patients with medical problems. It's not easy to choose this medicine in this current society. And no, there is no job protection when you choose this medicine. But the law does protect us in growing our own medicine and/or providing service with other registered patients in cooperation. And the advantage of allowing a location for those cooperative caregivers and patients is, again, removing money, removing equipment, removing black market, whatever, separating medicine from drugs. And respect of supplying proper quality. Black market, who knows what that is? Who knows what kind of price you're being charged? Who knows if they have a machine gun in their bedroom? I don't know. I would prefer to know that I have high-quality medicine of a strain that is proper for my symptoms. I don't want to know that it's from some, uh, pesticide-ridden third, well, anyway, from somewhere else. And, uh, I believe that was my primary points. But reducing fear and increasing access and knowledge is, is really what I would vote for. And yes, health tourism, that would be an excellent point made by a couple people. We, Michigan voted reciprocity. Californians can come here and visit our dispensaries or cooperatives, or if we had them, but I cannot go to California and visit their dispensaries. Californians did not vote that. And, um, and I, there's really not very many states, except reciprocity. Michigan is one of the few. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like to speak to you people. Um, my name's Wolf McNeil. Eight, eleven, eight fifty, Marquette, Run Republic. I understand one thing, and, you know, there's a lot of points I'd like to touch on, but I think that we're still going back to the same basic question. And I guess I have to ask or say one thing is that, um, if the past teaches us one thing, it's that the past teaches us nothing. Um, let's not go back to that. We're finally beyond that point. Look what, for example, prohibition has done. Now, we have prohibited what is very culturally and commonly known as a very beneficial and great substance that helps a lot of people, gets them off of some very serious, ineffective, and detrimental medication, mainly narcotics, does a much better job for them and gives them a much better quality of life. And I would like to see that promoted forward for everybody in, in general. And, um, I would like to touch upon the point of dispensaries in particular. I myself am a patient, my wife's a caregiver. Um, we are not dispensaries or co-ops or whatever. In the spirit of the law, as sixty-three percent of the constituents in every district of the state voted upon, they want to see marijuana medically used. Is this, are dispensaries or co-ops mentioned in the law? No. However, whether you call it a co-op, a dispensary, patient or caregiver, if you're providing medication or being provided medication by somebody that is in the constraints of the law, taking it out of the hands of the black market, and allowing people within the constraints of the law to utilize the law to the point there that it is structured for them, is it not better to do it that way than any other way? Just, just because the word dispensaries or co-ops aren't mentioned in the law doesn't mean that, so, you know, sometimes the law is written and things have to come out of it that are not specifically mentioned. But I think that in the spirit of the law, what was basically stated was that people have a right and a need to be able to get medication, medical marijuana. And it makes sense to me that there is a structure that is provided for those people to get it from in a legal context with other people in a legal group, registered with the state of Michigan, rather than have to go to the street corner, as that last lady stated, and buy it from, and donate money to terrorists? Who knows? I think that we're leading in the whole Midwest here. We have a great ability. We have, you know, we're, we're pioneers here. We have a great potential, not only as a state, but as a township, as a city. You know, we, we can make this a welcome thing and embrace it. And I'll tell you what really has put the kibosh on this for many years is the tobacco industry and the pharmaceutical industries were the most heavily driving force against legalizing this because they have their own vested interests in mind. Well, I think that now that we're beyond that, there's a huge potential economically, developmentally, and culturally as a community to where we can take this on to other levels beyond even where it is right now. And who knows what can happen if we just put aside, you know, so many years of prejudice and stereotypes against, I mean, look, look around in this room. How many people in this room look like they're just people trying to get stoned? Nobody. Everybody here is legitimately good people, participating members of the community that want to see this law brought to fruition for the benefit of everybody. And I think that we should all consider that as a whole. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi there, uh, Dave Gazetti, ninety-nine Winter Green Trail. I just have a few, um, quick comments. First, I want to thank, um, the mayor and the commission for, um, having this forum. I, I think it's really important to air, um, information and opinions on both sides of the issue. Um, I come to this from the perspective of being an employee at a, um, uh, medical practice where we deal specifically with the certification of patients, um, who are seeking medical marijuana for, um, alleviation of pain and, um, treatment for some of their illnesses. You know, I think a lot of the misconception in the community is that, um, it's a certification and registration is just a way for young kids to smoke pot legally. And I think there probably is a little bit of an element of that sometimes. But in our clinic, um, we see patients who are average fifty, sixty years old, and they come there with serious medical conditions. Um, we had, um, and we do see some young people. We had a young guy today, um, young twenties, bone cancer. Ill, cannot eat, losing weight, a lot of problems. Um, so I, you know, I want, I just would like the community and, and people to realize that there are legitimate medical patients who are looking for help, um, with the use of marijuana. That being said, the biggest question, when somebody leaves our office after they have gotten their certification, gotten the paperwork that they need to send into the state of Michigan, the biggest question we have from everybody is, "Now, where do I get it?" That's the first thing. I would say seventy percent, "Where do I get, where do I get my medication? Is there a store? Is there a dispensary? How does it work?" Um, so, you know, we, we're very careful to explain them the rules and the laws, and, and there's two separate parts of the act. Um, uh, you know, somebody other mentioned the affirmative defense, so it's, it's a huge convoluted thing, but we, we go from the, um, registration standpoint. We tell them, "You can either grow your own medication, or you can designate a caregiver, somebody to grow it on your behalf. That's the only option right now." But there are places throughout the state, many that I've visited, and communities all around the state, um, who do offer collectives and dispensaries. Um, some of them I've visited were not pleasant. Others were run in a very professional manner, um, and they, they're, they're not, you know, drug dealers with a, with a sign out front. They're really there, and their main concern and, and issue is, "How are we going to help these people?" And i- it's a serious issue, and I applaud anybody who, um, any patient who looks for a way to, um, cut out some of the poison, um, pills. And, uh, you know, I, nobody I think knows better than me and my family what those types of narcotic pills and medications can do to you. They're horrible. And, um, I, I appreciate people who are looking for a natural alternative. I appreciate, like I said, I appreciate the, um, commission and the city trying to figure out how, how best to deal with this issue, because, um, you know, it, it helps to, I think, to have some regulations, so it's just not willy-nilly. That being said, I just want to say thank you again to the commission. I appreciate, um, the fact that you guys are having this, um, opportunity for us to express our views. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gazetti. Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Donald Slaton. I'm from Calumet, Michigan.
A street address, if we could.
Uh, well, three twenty-four Kierzard Street. What I wanted to bring up was, is there's a section in the, of the law. If one of you has a ca- a copy, I believe it's section seven E. Could I have one of you guys read that for me? I, I don't have it exactly. Remember, does anyone here have a copy of the law?
Sir, this is just public comment, period. You can comment to us.
That, that gets me to my point. Um, I, there's sections of the law. One of them says, uh, affirmative defense may be used if a caregiver and his patient are collectively in a quantity of not more than two, uh, enough marijuana to ensure uninterrupted availability. They specified two-point-five ounces. They also specified uninterrupted availability. Okay? They, they also use the word "primary" in denoting a caregiver. Now, when I hear the word "primary," um, to me, that denotes more than one. You have a primary physician, but you may see more than one doctor seek an opinion elsewhere, possibly your doctor. You may feel maybe making a mistake. As far as dispensaries go, I believe they're allowed to operate under the affirmative defense section of the law due to uninterrupted availability. As a grower, uh, I can tell you that you can be good and you can be bad at it. Your skill level all depends on your knowledge and experience with it. If you know what you're doing, you know what you're doing. That being said, uh, such things as pest issues, uh, sterility is one thing that I would like to bring up. In regards to a standard as to how this should be operated, what you guys want to do is you want to regulate it. You want to say what can be done, when it can be done, where it can be done. Okay? Now, there is a section of the law that says, "Any other act not in accordance with this act shall be deemed void in regards to this act." That gets rid of your drug, um, your drug-free zone, because it's an act that was passed. The law says that you can't conflict with this law. That being said, uh, are dispensaries the best thing? They can be a good thing, and they can be a bad thing. A caregiver as a job is just as corruptible of a position as is, um, mayor, commissioner, chief of police. Any job is corruptible. Um, you can do just about anything you want. As a doctor, you can make a mistake. Anybody can make a mistake. I get, to get to my point, you have a lot of gray areas, and you have a lot of people trying to interpret it, uh, however they want to interpret it. The words that are wrote are the words that are wrote, and you ha- you can only construe them a certain way. To deny, uh, a capitalist's application to an industry that's been born goes against our system. A dispensary in itself is not a bad thing. Everyone can agree on that. Now, do I believe in, uh, the legalization of marijuana? No, I do not. I believe that that conflicts with the medical section of the law. Okay? It's for medical purposes. Now, do I believe in decriminalization? Decriminalization, you talk about the kid that's got one mistake, okay? Gets busted with pot. That five-year delay, uh, that five-year, "Oh, we forgive you," um, can cost you the military, can cost you everything. So it, it, it seems counterproductive to what, uh, you're trying to do. And I, I'm curious as to how much it costs to prosecute one person for a misdemeanor marijuana possession. I, I don't know if anybody has that answer here. That's more of a question than a comment, but with that, um, I'll leave you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, uh, my name is Burton Clement. I live in Nagani. My actual physical address is not pertinent to the information that I'm going to share here today.
Well, it, it needs to be shared with us. We need to have your physical address.
There's a couple of things that I would like to state. One was in regards to-
Sir?
Children.
We, we need to have your physical address.
One, two, three, my town, your city.
Have, have a seat, then.
No, sir, can I get your address?
Sure.
Point of order, please. He's out of, he's out of order, Your Honor.
Have a seat, please. Anybody else like to speak? Sir? Sir, you're out of order, please. Uh, you already spoke, sir. Nope. We're, we're pretty open. Uh, very few rules we have, but one is that you must give your physical address to speak, so.
Uh, my name's Steven Rabish. I'm a Traverse City resident, and I'm a current student at NMU University. My re- address is two forty-eight Mail and Toll. Uh, one point I may like to bring up with the, uh, kind of dispensary type of deal. In, uh, Traverse City, they've kind of, I don't know, they've been talking about it for a little while, and there's a, just kind of an idea. It doesn't necessarily need to be a store that's sole purpose is to distribute. It can just be, there's a restaurant that, uh, like, one day a week, they're open for four hours, and people show their card at the door. They can come in, and then they can talk to people about, like, things they're interested in for that given point in time. It's not twenty-four-seven, it's not seven days a week, just extremely limited. It doesn't have to be, like, it's steady flow. And that two-and-a-half ounces should, I mean, everybody's different with their own condition and whatnot, but hopefully that two-and-a-half should count you for about seven days. If not, they can do like a bi-weekly type of a deal. It's just kind of another aspect to kind of think about. It doesn't necessarily have to be twenty-four-seven, seven days a week, or just eight-hour-day type of a job. Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the commission?
My name is Derek Rabatell, twenty-one thirty-three Montgomery Street. I'd like to bring up the safety issue and the, and the decriminalization discussion. Marijuana use does not make people act out in a violent manner. Quite the opposite is true, in fact, and under the current law, these non-violent people are being arrested and being thrown in the same cell as violent criminals. And I was there many years ago, I was arrested and I was in, with some violent criminals, and I felt very scared. And this is how I feel, it's a safety issue for us, we're being put in danger for being thrown in the same cell as these violent criminals. That's all.
Right, thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission?
I'll just be quick, just wanted to, uh.
Name and address, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bo Sheppi, two twenty-three Pine Street in Gwin. You know, what can I say? Been on the ground level in Michigan for the past year that I've been back here, you know, I've been pretty much all over the place for work and whatnot, all over the country, California, out of the country, Vancouver, lots of places where they're a little bit of a head, you know, compared to an area like this. And, you know, I think it's amazing, actually, and I want to thank everybody, the board, for, I mean, us being here right now, I mean, I think it's amazing, and looking at you guys and knowing basically, probably where, I mean, a lot of you have come from, I mean, it's amazing that we're at this point. You guys are sitting here actually having a conversation about it. But I guess that has to do with the, the people speaking, which, yeah, you know, it's way better than it's been, right, but, you know, we're still a long ways off. You know, to come, come up with the, you know, the way it's handled, I mean, the people voted, this thing has to get in place, but all these laws and everything are going to change, right? You can't just drop a new industry, you know, a whole change of ways overnight, right? So, with that being said, this is temporary, and things are going to change down the road. But it's great that we're talking about it, we can't start, you know, way down the road, it has to be talked about now. So, I applaud you guys for doing it, you know, keep an open mind with all of it. There's, you know, a lot of bad old misconceptions about it and stuff. It's a way to, you know, blame certain things, and, you know, we put our kids in there as like, you know, an issue with it, I mean, it's, it's crazy. We'll abandon them in so many ways, in this area as well as others, but, you know, yeah, oh, well. Okay, let's see, anything else, oh, just the, the thing about smoking, I mean, I've, I haven't smoked pot in the longest time, and, you know, it's horrible that that's how we have to talk about it as the, you know, the delivery system, you know? It's not good, I, you know, I've been pushing it on anyone I can to vaporize or, you know, ingest it a different way. Smoking's not good, we shouldn't just say chalk it up to, you know, these people want to smoke pot, you know? It's not a good way to ingest it, sure, there's a lot of people still doing it that way. If anything I can do today is, you know, just to put it out to the, you know, forty, fifty people here, you know, to look at a different way of doing it, you know? Times have changed, times are changing, you know, laws, the way we do things, you know? You know, all of that, the way we deal with people to the way we, you know, use marijuana and stuff. It certainly isn't just smoking, and it certainly just isn't a bunch of burnout people doing it. You know, been all over, work with, you know, a thousand new people every year I do, you know, meeting people from all over. You know, and just have a, having conversations about it all the time. I work with people coming in from California and, you know, other states that are here for work, who would love to be able to get, you know, medicine here and stuff without having to break the law. I can't wait till we, you know, get to that point. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Dan Rosnick, I'm from Nagani, Sixth Boulder Road Court. I just want to say a few things. I've had close friends in my life die due to narcotic abuse. And, you know, usually these things start out, you know, the doctor saying, you know, you know, take this for a while and whatnot. And a lot of people get hooked on these things, and, you know, I'm not saying pot's the best thing in the world either, but one of my best friends is severely disabled and, you know, he doesn't like to take opiates, you know, OxyContin's and Methadone's and things of that nature, you know, they make him sick, they make him drowsy, make his life, you know, just as bad as if he wasn't taking them most of the time. You know, and sometimes he has to take them anyways because it's bad, you know? And, you know, like I said, I've lost some people close to me due to being addicted to these substances that everybody says is okay as long as your doctor gives it to you, which is, just shakes me up because, you know, I watch it with my own two eyes. And, you know, if somebody wants to try it their own way, you know, with something that's natural, has an extremely safe toxicity level, you know, I mean, I mean, you guys got methamphetamines, a schedule two drug for Pete's sake, you know? You know, there's legal uses for that even, you know, there's legal uses for everything, you know? I just really love the fact that, you know, people that are being prescribed to, you know, severe heavy-duty pain medications that they will be addicted to even if taken as prescribed by a doctor, you know, they have an option to change, you know, and not take these things that are just as bad, you know? Plus, they fill them up with acetaminophens that destroy your liver, just like alcohol, everything else, you know? And it's really a shame that, you know, so many people view that as the only way to take care of somebody's, you know, pain or suffering, you know, is just with an opiate. And, you know, as far as the dispensaries go, I mean, we have plenty of alcohol dispensaries, you know? A grocery store could be one, a bar could be one, a liquor store could be one. And, you know, nobody looks at a grocery store as a bad thing, but a bar, a lot of people look down on that, you know? That's what face you want to put on it, and it's probably going to happen, so I, you know, just like to say, you know, think about that and it's, it's most likely going to happen because that's the direction things are going to, you know? And that's what the majority of people have said. But, you know, if anything, put a good face on it, you know, so people have a choice. And it's not looked at as so ugly, you know, because a lot of people don't really consider marijuana such a bad drug. And, you know, so take, take that action now and put a face on things that, you know, don't attract the criminal element, you know? Because if, if you keep everybody hiding it, well, then, just that total element of not, you know, hiding it and being deceitful about what you're actually doing, that, that attracts more of a criminal element, I think, than the actual drug itself. I think it's just the actions of, you know, people are going to do it, and if you want to bring things up and you, everybody's looking at them, you know, people are a lot less likely to do bad things when everybody's watching, so, you know, the bad people come out when people aren't watching, and people don't care, and they don't want to hear about it, but, you know, just try to put a good base on things, you know? Because people have spoken, so, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
My name is Jay Hosh, I live at five thirty Cherry Street in Nagani. I want to stand up here to talk to you guys today about the undeniable economic benefit of proceeding with some of this stuff, not just with dispensaries and things of that sort, but other shops and bakeries, hydroponic stores, glass shops, all sorts of things can come from this, which can all be very beneficial to the economy here in Marquette and the whole UP in a general. And I just wanted the commission to, you know, have that brought up to your attention.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Susan Smart, five sixty-five Jasser Street, Ishfoming, Michigan. And one thing that hasn't brought up that I think should be brought up is, my husband and I are caregivers. We've already reached our limit for the people that we're allowed to provide for, as most caregivers in this area have. What are the people supposed to do who can't get a caregiver? You don't leave them much choice than to do it through illegal means if there's not enough caregivers to go around. The fact that in the state of Michigan there is such a backlog for being able to get your card is because there's so many people applying to be patients now. There's not enough caregivers to go around. One thing that would help that situation is if the city of Marquette and perhaps even outlying areas could see their way through to provide a safe place where people have access to their medicine. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
My name is Eric LaFave, two oh seven West Fair, Marquette, Michigan. First, I'd like to say I do understand the person who didn't want to give us a dress because it is a really scary thing, like was mentioned before, there's a lot of fear within this, like, when you were talking about how Ann Arbor, they often choose to prosecute at a state level, that shows that you're making an active choice to hurt these people that are doing these things more than you have to. It's not a choice of the law, it's, I mean, when it's, when you, you can see they say, oh, well, the law says this, so we're going to prosecute these people, but then it shows that these people aren't just prosecuting based on that, it's based on that they want to do these things. And it's kind, and it makes kind of afraid, actually. I know it's a lot of people, a lot of the, I'm not going to call it any of them in particular, but a lot of times, like, when it was brought up, there was candid laughing about it, and it shows a lot, a lot about how you feel about these things. But you don't take it seriously, but how you're just, oh, well, we can't, you know, do anything about this, so just, you know, laughed off, let these people have their little way, but it makes me feel like you don't really want to hear what we want to say, and that makes me really afraid of it, because you're city officials, people that you are supposed to help with, help us with these things. We're, and especially with, like, the police force, we really are like little mice, we, we can't really defend ourselves, we can't do anything about it. If you want to come in and do anything to us, you can. The laws say you're not supposed to, or the laws say these different things, it doesn't, that's the law, it's different in practice than it is in theory. And just by the Ann Arbor thing, it shows specifically that you, that there is a will to do this, not just because of the law, but because you want to do it to its full extent to get to the bigger part of it, what you want to like, you want to oppress the people who are doing these things, because you feel that if you say, do these things to them, that's, or, sorry, that's a little far, I guess, but when you, when there's this fear, it's, it's a lot harder to function as people. Like, I personally, I, I suffer from post-stress disorder because I was arrested as a seventeen-year-old child, and there was a lot of things that were done to me, I was still in high school, I really didn't know anything was going on, and I still suffer from every day, my life has changed because of this, because of the arrests that happened. And as for the expulsion thing, a good friend of mine, actually, he was going to become a teacher, and he's a great person, he's very smart, but when he was twenty years old, over twenty years ago, he, he was arrested for possession and he was denied that job, even though it was supposedly, supposedly expunged from his record. That is all.
Thank you.
There's a couple of different issues that I want to discuss.
Need your name and address?
Oh, sorry, two twenty-seven Mailland Hall, Northern Campus. The first thing, I saw a lot of you
Sorry.
Pardon me?
Your name?
George Koiner. I saw a lot of almost confused faces on the topic of dispensaries, and I feel that dispensaries in a way are probably the best way that the patient can get their medicinal marijuana, because if it's being grown and produced within the city limits, there's different fertilizers that are being purchased, there's different growing, I mean, light bulbs to hydration systems, all different things being purchased that are being taxed, that along with the cards with being renewed, I just, I, I don't want people to fear the dispensary because I feel that that's almost keeping it, I don't want to say like keeping it from being imported, but it's keeping money within the community along with the items being purchased to grow. And with the decriminalization, I, I guess, I mean, when a student is arrested, it can cost, I mean, thousands and thousands of dollars, they can miss class, they can, from being prosecuted, having to, having to pay for attorneys, different things that, and besides all that, the money that's being put in, or the tax money that's being used to prosecute them, I just feel that that's like, I don't know, not a good, I don't want to say not a good use of money, but it's just, I feel that there's different ways the money could be acquired and different crimes that are being committed out there that if, if it was decriminalized to a civil infraction, if the police officer could write a civil infraction and go to investigating other crimes of, I don't want to say more of an offense, but something that is more harming the good, I mean, the common good of everybody, that the person that was just smoking wasn't, I don't want to say harming anybody, but, I mean, just, I, that's, I guess I don't really know where else to go with that. But, yeah, I guess that's it.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment? Anybody else? You already commented, sir. No. Okay. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion, move to comments by city commissioners, we'll start on my left, Commissioner St. Ange.
Well, I, I guess what I would say is that as a commission, we're policymakers here. We're not here to pass judgment with regard to whether medical marijuana is right, is wrong, is good, is bad, it's not for us to decide. We have an obligation to protect the citizens of the city of Marquette. And as much as perhaps all the speakers who came up this evening and took the time to come and speak seem sincere with regard to their situation or their belief and their hope, in essence, you establish policy, rules, to protect everybody. And in that regard, we have to protect those who perhaps are less sincere than those of you that have taken the time to step up and speak with us today. I think in light of what staff has presented to us, I would be of the opinion at this point that we have an obligation to set some kind of, if you call, if you want to call it a regulation, somehow we need to incorporate or at least address this issue with regard to the citizens of Marquette going forward. Yes, there seems to be a ton of gray in this particular issue. I'm not here to pass judgment on the gray, but again, we're going to have to draw the line in the sand in some respects. And I don't know what that is. I sincerely hope, and I, and I know this will be taken wrong, but for those of you who, who, who don't typically come to these meetings, I mean, we deal with a lot of issues. This just happened to strike a chord with you. Many of you have never seen here before. We deal with a complexity of issues in all shapes and sizes every two weeks. And we have a tendency at times, I think, as a commission, to establish tasks, task forces to do this. And I sincerely hope we don't do that in this case. I think the last thing that we need is another task force to address something. I think we can lean on our staff to provide some guidance on what seems to be the best way for us to deal with this, again, not from the standpoint of passing judgment on what's right or wrong, but what is in the best interest of the citizens of Marquette. Perhaps we focus on the zoning side. Maybe we don't deal with it at all. I'm only one of seven. But at some point, I'm sure we're going to take this up in a more detailed discussion. And it, it will be will be interesting, I, I don't have an opinion one way or the other at this juncture, um, but again, I'm, uh, for, for the commenters who, who came up tonight and talked about, uh, our interpretation of the rule, uh, or what's right or what's wrong, or whether we should decriminalize, I think the comments that were made by most of the commissioners this evening, um, I think are on Mark and I believe in, uh, we're not here to pass judgment, the law is the law, all we can do is, uh, take our interpretation of that law, uh, to protect our community, and that's what we intend to do, that's what I would intend to do, depending on what we decide as a group to go forward with, so, um, complex issue, many points of view, certainly many valid, um, but, uh, again, we have to look out for the best of all, not just the best of some, and, uh, whatever rules we decide to undertake, if that's the way that we pursue this, uh, we have to account for those who are perhaps less scrupulous than you folks happen to be, and we have to make sure that the rules apply and they're safe for everybody in this community going forward, so, um, I've, uh, I've spoken plenty, we've been here for a long time, so, um, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Nimi?
Thank you, Your Honor, um, it's been interesting, it, it is a complex, uh, issue, there's a lot of gray areas, there's a lot of confusion about it, um, I think what I've heard tonight is very enlightening, I, I appreciate the comments of, of the public and certainly comments of the staff, um, I look forward to see, seeing recommendation from staff on, on how they feel we, we ought to proceed, I, I guess I haven't made up my mind, but it would be nice to have some sort of direction, some sort of, uh, concrete recommendation that we can, we can review and debate, and, and the public can, can also review it and, and debate it, and, and, uh, I guess we'll have to go on from there, but it is a, a complex issue, and it's been enlightening.
Right, thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Thank you, Your Honor, um, certainly a very useful session, uh, very illuminating, very eye-opening, a lot of great information presented from everybody, uh, personally, I've spent an awful lot of time in the last, uh, several months going over this issue, trying to do some research online, pulled out what I could, pro or con, left or right, up or down, and it certainly is, is a fascinating topic, but, uh, you know, the bottom line is, the law is the law, we have to follow it in spirit as well as in fact, uh, obviously, case law is still, I think, being written on it and being litigated, and over time, that will certainly clarify many of the issues, I think, that we've been discussing tonight. Uh, as a commissioner and in listening to what staff put out and listening to the public input, uh, I certainly still have a number of questions that I, I think staff really needs to, needs to think about for us, uh, for example, uh, the dispensaries that we've discussed, places where, uh, the, the caregivers will be producing the product, should there be a distance from schools, for example, is that a reasonable thing, should there be a distance from parks, from churches, I don't know, I mean, these are reasonable things, uh, we have a, a, a system in the city where we inspect rental property to ensure that it's safe for occupancy, uh, should we have a similar system that looks at the mechanics of, of, of producing marijuana, in other words, is it safe for the heating systems, is it safe for the plumbing, uh, to protect really all of our citizens, uh, what about residential districts, uh, is it reasonable to have a, a, a caregiver's establishment in the middle of a housing development, for example, or is it more reasonable that perhaps they should be somewhere else in town in a business district? Uh, these are issues, I think, that we kinda need to wrestle with, and I, I don't know that these are bad issues, they're, they, they make you think, I mean, how well can we make this work for everybody? Should we have hours of operation? Uh, is that a reasonable thing to think about? Uh, one of the speakers spoke to how I think a, a caregiving establishment was only open just several days a week or several hours a day and worked very well, so, again, things we chew our way through, uh, but certainly, any of the controls, I think, that we, we would look at are ones that really have to best serve our entire city, everybody, and, uh, again, I, I thank you all for your time and your input. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
I think everything's been pretty well said, I, I guess I would just like to reiterate, since some of you, when you spoke tonight, were trying to convince us this was a good idea, that's not even a question on the table, I mean, there's no question that we're, there's a law and we're gonna find a way to implement that law, we're not gonna stand in the way of what the people of, of Michigan have voted for, we're simply looking for the way to see that that law is implemented. I came here tonight, as I say, mostly concerned about issues like how do we distribute it so that we keep neighborhoods safe, you know, we keep the community safe, uh, Commissioner Stonehouse listed some of the ways, you know, I mean, if your neighbor is, is, is doing something that creates a fire hazard for the whole neighborhood because of the way they're growing a product, you know, this is something we have to be concerned about, and it, it's probably a way out example, but it's, it's just, this is the kind of thing we're looking at, how can it be implemented in a way that is good for the community, but the thing I did learn tonight, and I, I won't say I learned, but was emphasized to me, is that, um, we've also gotta look at it in terms of the people who need the substance as a patient, uh, that, that is a legitimate issue, and I, I think one place, one person said, uh, people need a safe place to get their medicine, well, that would also be my concern, too, and, and I'm sure the concerns of the rest of this commission, so, we're not, we're not, we're not here looking at ways to stand in the way of, of, uh, this, this law in any way, we're here looking at ways that Marquette can do it right so that it's safe for everybody, including those who are using the program, and I guess I just wanna say one more thing, because I spoke out pretty clearly before on the fact that I don't think Marquette can solely discuss the issue of, well, we can discuss it, but have an impact on the issue of decriminalization. When I say that, it, it doesn't mean that I'm necessarily against that issue, I'm just saying it has to be resolved to me by the state of Michigan, you cannot do it community by community, uh, I just don't think that's the way to do it, I'm not saying it's a good idea or a bad idea, I think it's something that has to be looked at, but I think it, it's something that has to apply to the state, not, not to one part of the state, so that's why I said what I said.
All right, thank you. Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. This was not a boring meeting tonight, I tell ya, I've been at some boring ones, but this was interesting, and also, I had, like I say, attended that, uh, Michigan Marijuana Seminar in Lansing, or, uh, in Dearborn in September, that was a two-hour session, and it went, it felt like it was only fifteen minutes long, because of everybody's input, there's many hundreds of pages concerning the Michigan marijuana law, and nobody knows the answer to it, I mean, there's so many gray areas, and, yes, it is a good thing, this is what the voters wanted, the voters had a chance to say yes or no, and it was overwhelming, a seventy percent, so, uh, you know, the people knew what they wanted passed, and they knew it was for a good cause of, of, uh, health issues for the people suffering with pain and whatever else, but, one of the things about this law was it moved us into the twenty-first century, this here, I guarantee you, is not gonna be our last meeting, we're gonna see, some of the commissioners that say, hey, we never seen you people before, they won't be saying that, the next time we have this on agenda, you people will be back, and you people are very educated people, and you know a lot of issues that we don't even know, as we sit up here, we aren't authority on everything, but you people are exposed to a lot more things than we are up here, but, one of the things, we're open to listening to all of yous on your thoughts, your concerns, and, uh, issues like this, and when we listen to you, sometimes when they say, um, gee, I wasn't never gonna vote this way, but after listening to the majority of the people, I, I can change my mind on this, and you know where I'm going with this, so, you know that this is not a dead issue, and I really thank the Market Police Chief Mike Angeli, the city manager, for getting us all together here and prosecuting attorney, that wise, and all you people, I can't thank you enough, 'cause, like I say, this was not boring, and this is not gonna be the last time that we see yous here again, so, welcome to the twenty-first century, and one other thing, just for, I gotta switch gears on this, 'cause it's gonna, this is a public safety announcement, is, um, due to the heavy, uh, snowfall that we've been experiencing in the city of Marquette, that, um, I would encourage people in their neighborhoods to keep the, uh, fire hydrants clear in their area, 'cause this time of the year is a potential for homes to, uh, catch on fire due to many other electric heaters or whatever they should have plugged in, and by keeping that hydrant clean of snow, uh, when the fire department does get there, they can hook up to the hydrant without having to clean around it, Public Works and Water Department got enough to do right now, just trying to keep the streets plowed, and they're also removing snow twenty-four-seven along the streets, so, uh, it wouldn't, uh, take you but a few minutes to just clean around the hydrant, and you young folks, too, uh, you know, like I say, you can do it a lot faster than I can, but think about where you're living and department complex you're in, and, uh, look around the area for hydrant, just clean it off a little bit, thank you, uh, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. I'd like to thank, uh, Matt Weasey for coming tonight, Matt, thank you, uh, Sarah Durwin, uh, for coming and sharing some of your expertise with us, the city staff for working, uh, very hard, city attorney, city manager for, uh, putting a lot of this together, um, and I look forward to a recommendation as well, um, you know, again, uh, it's been reiterated by everyone here, our, ours isn't to judge or, or to decide whether or not, uh, it's acceptable medical use or medicinal purposes, that's been decided, you know, that, that, we're just here to make sure that whatever happens in the city is done safely, and, you know, right now, y- you could have a caregiver, uh, growing, you know, plants in, in the basement under a homemade improvised system of a duplex house that maybe has a family of four with two young kids living in the upstairs apartment, I mean, you can see that there's potential for some issues, now, um, th- those are the types of situations that we as elected officials, um, in this community have to look out for, we have to make sure that people are safe and that things are done, uh, correctly, um, w- we also don't allow businesses to operate outside of homes or inside homes in residential areas, you know, unless they're given, uh, specific permission through our, you know, planning commission reviews it, um, and that's essentially what this is, is, it's, it's businesses, um, of, of supplying marijuana, so, that's why I thought it was imperative that we start looking down those, th- this path, um, so that we didn't get into a situation, uh, you know, down the road and say, boy, where were we on this, you know, we could've really done something to prevent, whether it's a tragedy or, or any type of a, a criminal behavior, or, you know, things just getting out of hand, so, I'm, I'm glad, uh, so many people came, I was asked today, you know, do, do you expect a lot of people, and I said, you never know, sometimes you get a few, sometimes you get a lot, but more participation is always better, so, uh, I thank everyone for coming, that's all I've got, city manager, any comments?
Thank you, Your Honor, uh, I'd also like to, uh, concur with all of the, uh, statements that we've heard this evening, I'd like to thank the commission for, uh, for taking the leadership and bringing this issue before the community, I'd like to thank staff as well for putting together, uh, as well as with our esteemed guests, uh, the subject matter we were able to hear and share this evening, but I think most importantly, I'd like to thank all of the people who've come to this evening, uh, I'd like to thank the folks who, uh, have shared their personal views and experiences with us, I know that takes a lot of courage, uh, as a community, uh, i- it's very comforting for me to have that kind of support as we try to inform policy, because change is always difficult, uh, while this might be common experience for other communities and other areas of the world, it, it's still relatively new here, and, uh, having that cour- courage in the community, both on the part of our elected leaders and, and with our residents and with our, our, uh, community members even within the areas beyond, is gonna help make sure that we're as informed as we can be, uh, I assure you all, uh, we heard everything that was stated this evening, uh, we're fortunate because it was also broadcast, and it'll, I'm sure, be rebroadcast, so, uh, we'll be able to lean on those comments and the others that we continue to receive through our face-to-face interactions and, uh, through the email and through oth- other contact that we have with citizens, and hopefully we'll be able to bring forward informed suggestions on how we wanna proceed, uh, at some point in the near future. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. With that, we're adjourned.